Welcome. This is Tuesday, March 20th, 2018, the Finance and Operations Committee meeting on National Board of Education. We are at the school administration building. And we are beginning this meeting at 6:35 PM.
Okay.
Mr. Mosher will be attending the meeting electronically as he continues his rehabilitation and recovery from surgery associated with a broken hip and edema. And you can hear us, Mr. Mosher, correct?
Yes, I can.
And you are alone in the room?
I am alone in the room.
Thank you, sir. Others attending, Mrs. Oden is here. Mr. Garino, I am here. Mrs. Van Vlieder will not be able to attend. Mr. Donovan is here, and Mr. Smith. Also in attendance, we have Ms. Hoensie and Mr. Kaufman. So our first item of business is a request for bids, energy service companies. Mr. Smith has given us this completed invitation to bid. Would you like to speak on that, Mr. Smith?
Sure. It's a -- my understanding was you want an update on the calendar specifically. And if you look in the document, it was in the board package, it's on page five of the appendices. And so basically, I've already issued the invitation to bid. That was done on March 5th. And the 28th of the month is when bids are due in my office. I scheduled that way so that I have a chance to go through them and assess them and have a recommendation for you for the April Finance and Operations Committee meeting. So I kind of left that blank as far as specific date. And then the full board has to vote on it, of course.
So the full board has to vote on this to approve it?
To approve the recommended bidder, so the successful bidder.
Okay, once you get the bidders in, you'll give us a successful bidder?
Correct. And as recommended by the city attorney, I did send it to all the eight qualifying firms.
Right.
So they all have another shot at it. I probably received four or five calls of interest from those eight. So I expect it to turn out.
Yes, Mr. Donovan?
Typically, we don't give the committee the invitation to bid. We bring back the results of the bid and then have the committee vote on it. This one was a little different in that it went out first and then it came back and I was sort of redoing it again. So that's the reason why we're even sort of sharing it at this point, so that people are more up to date with where we were. Because we were pretty close to sort of choosing a firm and then we sort of retracted that and we started the process over again.
Mr. Mosher, do you have any questions or comments on this invitation to bid?
No, Sean knows what he's doing.
Okay. And I think we went over this last finance -- last time we had Finance and Operations Committee, we had a discussion on this also. Mrs. Oden, do you have any questions?
No.
No. Mr. Kaufman or Ms. Oden?
No, I'm good, thank you. No, I sat through the original batch, so that's -- once I heard the word redo, I knew where we were. Thank you.
So I think we're all set on this. We'll wait for the bids to come in and then we'll bring it back to the full board. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Okay, moving on to the next item, which is item number two, security improvements, infrastructure fund. Mr. Donovan has handed out a list of improvements. Would you like to speak on this?
Yes, well, this is -- I think we did discuss this previously. The state has a new fund, Public Infrastructure Fund, of which most of the types of projects they refer to are either life safety type projects or security projects. We saw this as an opportunity to upgrade our current security system. We spent over a couple million dollars back about four years ago and put it in. And this is to upgrade it, not only to upgrade some of the cameras, but also with vestibules and some, I think there's some glass too, some ballistic glass and some windows. So I did, since this is a new grant, I did sort of talk to the city accounting department today and said, okay, how are we going to deal with this? Since the way the state is going to do this is you submit an application, the application gets approved, and that's what on the sheet that was passed out, you can see. Basically, it's first put in, it's recommended by one group, and then it goes up to a second group at the state. That second group would then actually approve it. So you can see that, you'll see there's three items on here that are recommended, so that means Group A has recommended it, now the final group has to approve it. If it says yes, it's been approved by the second group. And if it says pending funds, then that means it hasn't been approved by the first group yet. Mr. Smith also wrote on here sort of when some of this project work can be done. He wrote now, or sort of, I believe April would be April vacation, that's what he chose. Some of these things are better done without students in the buildings. And then there's a few that would be summer. So basically, what the state will do is they will pay us, we need to spend the funds first, and then the state will reimburse us within 30 days, 80% of that. So basically, what we're going to do for the accounting for that, I spoke with the city accounting group, we're basically going to set up a grant. We'll probably do it by school, so each school will have a sort of state infrastructure grant set up for it. We will fund it with the 20% in there, and then when the state gives us the money, it'll go into the grant. So I think it'll work out well. And I think, as we said before, there's about $19 million in the fund. Mr. Smith, did you check to see what the balance left in the fund is?
Yes. So they have expended all their funds. As you indicated, the recommended have been approved, they just need the governor to sign off on them. Two that are marked pending means they ran out of money. But they haven't turned them down because as we go through the process, some things may come in cheaper than was originally expected. So they're still in the queue for potential approval.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mosher, do you have any questions or comments regarding these projects?
Yeah, I just heard they say that with the, it was pending, and that meant that they didn't have the money. But they said a lot to it because sometimes these things come in cheaper than what was originally requested. And that was my question. On this equipment, you know, I'm trying to get through my head about when you put out a bid for something, something can come in just as good, but especially cheaper. Where do we get these information from?
Go ahead, Mr. Smith.
Yeah, so the things like the cameras, either exterior or interior, those are already purchased through our security vendor, so through Securidine. And we have hard costs for those already. Wherever we had a project cost, we went out and got bids. So it's a good number. The only thing that might change somewhat might be the vestibules construction and the windows, we're adding ballistic glass. But everything else, I don't expect the numbers to be much cheaper than what we've shown.
Okay. Just as a side question, have you or anybody let this all estimate from Bliss? When we had the meeting a number of years, and he gave us a very detailed list of what to expect in the way of safety and equipment that we should look into. I have mine around here somewhere in the house, but I don't have any way to go and start looking around it.
Yeah, I also have those files somewhere in a box somewhere in my office. But we are just following the same plan. And where these grant requests came from are, we've discovered there are holes in our coverage. So we're adding a camera, if that was, say, an exterior camera, and that was a part of the exterior of the school that we could not see or record the information for. So we're continuing along with that. The vestibules has been, as we've unfortunately seen, more and more school shootings. In fact, there was one today, nobody heard.
A big hole.
Yeah. We've decided to reconfigure how that whole process of checking in visitors is done. And these vestibules will kind of put the visitor into a holding area until we can asserten that they're okay, and then they'll be buzzed through. So that wasn't in Mr. Bliss's original plan, but certainly all the cameras are kind of falling through.
Yeah, and I remember they were very thorough in what they did. I had the list, and it was, you know, like, almost the next thick of their recommendations.
Yes.
And I thought, gee, if we went with that, it was expensive, but it would have given us enough hard coverage.
Yeah. I would say that we pretty much fall through the high 90% of his recommendations. Again, this is where we've discovered some holes in the coverage. And we did have to cut a little bit from our efforts there because we were topping out on how much money was available through the city.
Yeah, I didn't mean to resurrect that idea of that, but sometimes in hindsight, there's a nugget that you might miss, and it'd be significant.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. I find that there's a history to a lot of these projects, and it's good to know that history. So it's actually good that you bring that up. We can modernize it and adjust it for future. Does anybody else? Ms. Hoensie?
Thank you. I'm interested in what happened to Mount Pleasant and New Surles. I had a constituent from Mount Pleasant listen to the budget, and she was concerned. I mean, is security sufficient at Mount Pleasant?
So we, so Mr. Lassard, who you're probably familiar with, has been putting together a plan by school of recommended security improvements. He has new, both of those schools are in that plan. Our biggest thing with Mount Pleasant was when we were going to renovate that school, we would change the positioning of the main office. Some people would be shepherd straight through to the main office before entering the school. And that's still in the plan. What we are currently doing is putting together a recommendation that I haven't even shown the superintendent yet, but there's going to be recommendations pretty much for every single school beyond these grants. This is pennies from heaven, this is something that state came out, so we, you know, quickly, all the quick things we could do.
Right.
The plan we'll be coming forth with will include Mount Pleasant and changing that entrance. It may include Elm Street, but we're hoping to have a major renovation, that school would be part of it. New Surles is, that's actually one we're kind of wrestling with because of the way the office is positioned, the front doors and the elevator in between them. But I expect in the next month, and perhaps by the next Finance and Operations Committee, we can have a thorough recommendation for you.
These are the projects that are just fought as grant through the state. So there's lots of other needs.
Right. Is this updated plan going to be part of the fiscal '19 budget? Or is this just an ongoing discussion?
This, well, we haven't even talked about it internally, I haven't talked to Mr. Donovan about it, but my hope would be, it's going to be a significant amount of money to do what we weren't expecting. So I think we'd have to go to the Board of Alderman to get that money. It could come out of school funds from the Capital Reserve Fund, but that's pretty much diminished as well at this point. So it may require a new effort.
But it's not something that's going to adjust our current, but the budget that we're discussing on Wednesday nights?
No, no, I didn't anticipate using or asking for money in that area.
Mr. Kaufman, did you have any?
Yes, thanks. Two things. One is, the federal government, if you believe what's in the press, they're talking about some legislation that may eventually filter down to us, so that might pick up these pendings. And then the other thing I wanted to ask Mr. Donovan, when you first spoke to this, was it, did you say lighting as well as security?
Life safety.
Life safety, okay, it wasn't lighting. Because I was going to say, if there was a lighting project, could you do better lights over at North?
Yeah, these pending projects have, there's a process that they go through.
I understand.
So they may actually be approved, we don't, we may not actually. That's my understanding. So they've gone through like one part of the process, and they may actually get approved here, so we don't have to worry about getting other grants.
Well, the point is, is if there's other grant money available, I'm sure we have more projects that we'd also like to take advantage of. Our list is long, we know that.
Yes, yes.
I was on the Finance Committee for two years, so I recall the pipeline. Thank you for correct, I thought you said lighting?
No.
And that's where, maybe they were treated separately. It's a comprehensive list, it addresses most of the schools. It's low-hanging fruit, I think. Right, it's obvious we need to move on these, and everything here is very timely, so I think it's good to hear. Thank you.
Mrs. Oden?
Yeah, I just, I have to say, I'm kind of surprised. We just finished Broad Street and Sunset Heights. And I'm surprised that interior cameras weren't included when we remodeled them.
No, we typically, our, heard the Bliss study that we did, typically that had a camera at the entrance and just inside the entrance. And as we've, I think we're taking lessons learned since then. We've unfortunately seen a lot of school shootings. And the guidance we're getting from the experts is, you know, have coverage in your main hallways or your major areas where people congregate. So it'd be like a cafeteria or a library or the major hallway. So that's what these interior cameras entail.
So we didn't put them in either one?
We did not.
But are they?
Just at the main entrance and just inside.
Okay, are they, are these interior cameras at the schools that aren't listed on here? Like Elm Street and Mount Pleasant, do they have interior cameras?
Elm Street has some limited interior cameras, but not sufficient to cover all the hallways. Mount Pleasant just has the main entrance and just inside the main entrance at this point. So what I, when you, this is a question, those are sorts of things that would be in this next effort, we're going to be unveiling within the next month.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Kaufman?
Thanks. I don't know if you can answer this question, I'll just preface it that way. I've been substitute teaching up in Merrimack, and right after the events in Florida, they just changed, you know those doors that open into like the secretarial area in a lot of the schools? Please close the door. That was a big security thing they did. But the question, the point was, it was somebody from either the state or Homeland Security that went and walked through their buildings to make recommendations. So has that happened here? And maybe you can't answer that question, I don't know, but at some point, I would like to know. I'll just say it that way. So, I know it's out there, and, because I think, especially for the board, I think the public wants to know, too. Has there been an audit? And, you know, these are, this is low-hanging fruit. But I mean, and your next proposal is going to be a lot deeper, it sounds like it's going to. And you're talking, when you said it goes to the Alderman, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but you said if we may have to go to the Alderman for funding? So that sounds like something that could be significant enough that there might be bonding attached to it.
Yes.
That's how I interpreted that. So am I on the right track?
You're on the right track.
Okay, thank you. So folks, what we, what that means is, real money to solve real problems that are as a result of an audit that we want to do and we need money beyond our normal operating budget to do it. So we're on it. That's what I want the public to know. Okay, thank you.
And even with that next effort that I've talked about, we probably, as part of it, want to hire an architect, particularly one versed in security measures, to help us identify good winter project.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the Public School Infrastructure Fund grant. Would anybody like to?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Mr. Oden. I'll second that. On the motion, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Yes? Okay. Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Garino votes yes. Motion to approve the receipt of the Public School Infrastructure Fund grant in the total amount of $399,034.79, with the stipulation that some of the grants remain pending at the state level. Our next item is the Trane contract. Did I say that right? Train. We're here just for that.
All good security, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Good night, all.
So the next thing, unit ventilated purchase. Two summers ago, we received funds, I think we actually used our infrastructure fund, Capital Reserve Fund, to replace 10 unit ventilators at Main Dunstable and 10 at Burchell. Got rid of most of the bad ones at that point, also replaced the rooftop units for the two offices. We're still having issues with them, we'll probably continue to have issues with them until we renovate the schools or replace all the unit ventilators. It's about 30 some odd in each school. So we're recommending that we buy six more units from Trane, in a total amount of $23,500. And we will be doing the labor to install it in-house. There will be a follow-on request to have those units connected to our control system, but I don't have that quote as yet.
Mr. Mosher, do you have any comments or questions on the request to purchase the six unit ventilators?
No, not really. I happen to have a working knowledge of the Trane equipment. And it's been used extensively in railroad cars with 40-ton evaporators. So being associated with it, and knowing the engineering behind it and the system, I'm all for it.
Mrs. Oden, do you have any comments or questions?
No, but I'm looking, it looks like they're 27 years old.
Yeah, to my knowledge, they date back at least to the last renovation.
If they've held up that long, I think we've got no money spent, I would think.
Yeah, we did, after we changed out the 10-inch school, then a couple of them failed last winter.
Yes, yes.
And then, which created some flooding, so it's one of those things you wish you had a little more money to do even more of them, but.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve this request to purchase six unit ventilators from Trane in the amount of $23,500.
Mr. Mosher, do you want to make that motion?
Yes, don't move.
I'll second it.
Okay. On the motion, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
And Mr. Garino votes yes. The motion carries. Okay. Next on the agenda is our February, fiscal year, rather, 2018 February transfer report. Actually, before we move to these, Mr. Smith has a couple of things that he'd like to. Thank you.
So I'll talk in detail about this one because it wasn't in a board package, and Mr. Mosher needs to know what's going on. So this past fall, we entertained several solar-related vendors that came in and gave us backgrounds on different approaches to get into the solar business and to save money for us. So there's these things called solar farms, and there's primarily one company in the state that does this. We've been waiting for the Senate and the House to pass a certain bill that allows us to do this while also purchasing energy from a third-party supplier, which we do from Agara. So the way this works is you just, they take a look at your kilowatt usage, and you're basically just sign up for a piece of that solar farm. They, you don't necessarily get your energy from them, but they're putting the energy into the system, into the grid. And in return for this, and I'm sure that there's, they're businessmen, so they're not going to lose money on this, and they will get the rebates that might be associated with it. But what happens is, we'll have a check written to us, any amount, it's one cent per kilowatt-hour usage. So we're getting checks every year for $136,000, basically for doing nothing, other than attaching our name to the solar farm. It's, to me, it's kind of a no-brainer. It's, we're getting a check. My understanding is actually the check will be written twice a year, so half $136,000 will be coming every six months. The solar farms are still in the process of being built. They don't actually expect the first one to be ready until early next calendar year. But they're already lining up municipalities and other entities to be in a solar farm. If we wait longer, we will miss out on the chance to get on this first farm, which incidentally is being built on the landfill in Milton, New Hampshire. And they are going to build additional ones, but again, the way it was described to us is a queue of municipalities, schools, what have you, that want to be in on this.
And it takes time to permit, the permitting to get the solar farms.
So our, my recommendation is to sign on for this program. It's called the newenglandsolar garden dot com. And this is really about the end.
Well, I think the one other thing that is, if for some reason, let's say some other group comes to us and wants to pay us twice as much as this for the same thing, we simply can give them 180-day notice, and then we can just leave this and go do something else if we choose. At this point, that option doesn't exist. So, and until they're, really get the power going, we could drop out if we wanted to between now and when the farm is built. But I think they're going to build most of it through this calendar year, once the snow stops flowing, probably.
So I can, I apologize, I didn't make a copy of this, but, so some of the municipalities are already signed up, or Milton, Antrim, Somersworth, Conway, and Epping. UNH is partially signed up for this. FW Web, Nashway, the Boys and Girls Club has signed up for it, Conway Ice Arena has signed up for it. Those are the main ones. Fertillo's, do you see that one there? Okay. Yeah, so down at Restaurants, that was the bottom of my sheet, Fertillo's, Homestead Restaurants, Parker's, Maple Barn, you know, next door, and Mason. So a good number of places have already signed up for it. We will be a major chunk of that for this first solar farm. And I think it'd be a nice thing for the city of Nash, it would be one of the first ones to go.
May I have a question?
Yes.
Do we have any record, is there any data on solar farms that show, maybe they have more brownouts? When there's a high demand for electricity, in some places they have brownouts, they, you know, they ask people to reduce the temperature on the air conditioning or whatever. Do you know if any of these solar farms have had problems like that?
Well, my understanding of the science is they will be producing electricity constantly, particularly daytime with the sunlight. So they themselves won't be a reason for the brownout to occur. They are putting their electricity into the grid and basically selling it to EverSource. So if the entire grid of New England has a brownout, it won't be attributed to the solar, it'll be something else.
The brownout happens at night when the sun goes away. But I think, I think what happens is, it goes into the grid, but the grid is constantly, they're fueled with electricity because they're burning fossil fuels and they're creating electricity, so the grid is always up. And so basically, the sole, what the solar does, it adds to the grid, so you're adding energy into the grid, but there are times when it doesn't, it doesn't produce energy, so it's. produce energy, so it's, we're act, we'll be, we'll be buying our electricity from somewhere else at that time, is that...
Well, we're, we're buying our electricity from Agara for the next-
Yeah.
-almost three years.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But, but when we, when we join this, are we buying electricity from them, or...
We're still going to get from Agara and EverSource.
Okay, so, but they're, 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 they're purchasing it from them, is that it?
Correct.
They're selling it to EverSource. They're creating it at the farm, they sell it to EverSource, EverSource pays them. Okay. Where just, oh, we're committing to do is sort of take up some of that-
Take up some of that energy that they're...
Because EverSource is like, well, unless you have people that agree to purchase this, not that you're actually purchasing the actual power. That's sort of the agreement they're required to get.
They're creating more demand, and they need a market for it.
Right.
And so we're signing up as part of their market.
Yes.
There, there are incentives, federal and, uh, federal's going down a bit, but also the state and the utility companies that, you know, rebates and whatnot to do, to go to renewable energy. So solar is one of them. It could be wind energy, you know, it could be hydro.
Other things too.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mosher, do you have a comment or question?
Uh, I don't have a question, but I have a comment.
Okay.
You know, some of the, uh, the things that they do is to balance out the, uh, the usage. Uh, I don't know if you're familiar with the reservoir that, uh, they have in Massachusetts, where they take the river water at the time when the demand is low, and they pour it into the reservoir, which is on top of a mountain, and then when the demand, uh, for power goes up, they use that, uh, water that's been stored, uh, in the, in the time of the low demand, they use that to, uh, to peak out the, uh, the, uh, the demand, uh, on their generators. There's another way that's done too, and that's to have peaking stations that are, uh, that I know Vermont, uh, has several, and that's to have, uh, diesel standby, uh, units that when the demand goes up to over a certain amount, that they automatically cut in and feed power back into the, into the lines. And then there's a third one, which is, uh, using super capacitors, that, uh, they stored, uh, uh, electricity, it's stored in these capacitors at the time when the, uh, demand is, uh, is, uh, is low, and, uh, sun is shining, and, uh, they're developing, uh, some, uh, certain amount of excess power that goes into the storage on these, uh, super capacitors, and this way they use it to balance out their loads.
We, we actually have a capacitor banks at both of the two high schools. We did that fifteen, maybe twelve years ago, and so, I mean, you're right, Mr. Mosher, it's, it's, we have storing energy until you actually need it. Uh, it also helps to flatten out the demand curve, so, uh, if you can think of a bell curve, it just chops it off the top, and that, part of your bill is from your demand, electrical demand, so it helps with that.
And they use the different systems to, uh, to do that.
Right.
Hydro, whether you can use super caps, or they, uh, they use, uh, peaking stations.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
What would be the earliest fiscal year we would see this rebate?
Fiscal year twenty, probably.
Okay.
If they can complete construction, then you're probably right. If it's early, like, two thousand nineteen, that would be, yeah, that following summer, late that following summer.
Okay. Thank you.
So how do, how does the committee feel about, are you approving this, a motion to approve?
That's, that's what we'd like, so we have our name on the list.
Mr. Mosher, would you like to make that motion?
Yes, would I be, be to, uh, so consider the, uh, the motion made.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay. Uh, on the motion, uh, Mr. Mosher?
Yes, absolutely.
Uh, Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
And Mr. Garino votes yes. The motion carries three to zero.
So what I just handed out is from EverSource. As you know, we've been converting our interior and exterior lighting to LED, and, uh, EverSource has, has helped us to do that. They actually have been funding upfront the, uh, cost of, of switching over to LED lighting, um, and then we pay it back from the savings, which, which are considerable. We just completed a job at, at Dr. Crisp, uh, a month ago, and, uh, so what I'd like to do, and EverSource has agreed to do it, is do the same program at, uh, at Bicentennial Elementary and at the Fairgrounds Middle School. You'll see, they wrote down Fairgrounds Elementary by mistake, but they know it's the middle school. I'll correct that with them. Again, this costs us no money upfront. Uh, we just simply pay it back from the savings that we see in the electrical bill every month. And if you go to, let's see from the package I gave you, the, you see the, the third sheet of paper in, shows for Bicentennial, gives you the actual project cost, what rebates are available for the technology we're going to be using, the net project, and then there's a program charge, a one-time charge of five percent. And then so we ultimately have to, uh, pay with EverSource financing, uh, two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, which, um, again, is paid every month through our bill. We, as you go down to, uh, the bottom third of the page, you can see we have two payment options. Um, one is seventy-four months, and the other one's fifty-six, and the amounts that you pay vary with that. Still the same number of total payments. We typically take the shorter repayment schedule.
Yes.
So, uh, which is, which is a, a, an indicator, indicator for you for the return on investments, so fifty-six months is less than five years, and, uh, typically something in that neighborhood we've approved in the past. If it's less than eight percent, I'd usually view it as a good deal. That was for Bicentennial. If you move forward a few pages, actually the very last page in the package, uh, is the same information for, um, Fairgrounds Middle School, and it's the very last page, just flip the whole thing over.
Oh, okay, thank you.
So in this case, it's a, of course, a bigger school, and it, it's going to take six years to, uh, pay that back, so seventy-one months, but, uh, all very doable, again, it just comes from the savings. Mr. Mosher, you're aware we've done this quite often. We did it for all the exterior parking lights and, uh, and the wall packs and everything else in the past, and, uh, you may have been, uh, aware that we, where we just did it at Dr. Crisp.
So I had recommended about, uh, four years ago about converting the parking lots into LEDs, and at that time, it wasn't, uh, it really wasn't practical, but the, uh, the cost had come down enough. But, uh, I'm glad to see that we're putting LEDs in and, uh, reaping the savings.
Yeah, because we, basically on this, it doesn't cost us anything, and then at the end of the term, that's when we'll really start to feel the savings, because that's when we'll get the, for example, Bicentennial, you know, thirty-eight-hundred dollars a month savings on, on the bill. We won't see it for the first fifty-six months. We might see thirty dollars, they're kind of estimating, but, so it's pretty much going to be break even, but after fifty-six months, we'll be in good shape. The other thing we can do, which we did do two years ago, we typically haven't had enough money at the end of the year, but you can pay these off sooner if you want. So if you want to start getting the savings, if you have money, extra money in the budget at the end of the year, you can pay down, uh, the amount sooner, just like you could with a car payment or a, or a mortgage. And we did do that, I think it was two, two years ago.
Yeah, we, we, before Dr. Crisp, we did this at Penetech Middle School and at New Surles.
So we've done this already?
We've done this quite a few times.
Okay.
It, it's a great program that EverSource has out there that's called Smart Start.
Mrs. Oden, you have a question?
Yes, thank you. How many other schools would be left to do if we get Bicentennial and Fairgrounds Middle School done? How many more schools in the district would we have to do?
The majority, I would say about two-thirds of them. We haven't done the high schools.
Okay.
But we're going to be doing that through our ESCO contractor, that one we talked about upfront with about the bidding.
Right.
That'll be a huge savings when we convert that. Elm Street, that'd be part of our renovation. Same with Main D and Birch Hill. So Dr. Crisp, Sunset Heights, and New Surles are the three elementary schools that we've done so far. So we have nine other ones that we still have to address.
How about Broad Street? They were just renovated.
They, there was still a T-five light that would use that.
But Sunset has them.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
How about, uh, Lead Street with the, uh, the, the ball field and, and all that? We get help with the electricity for that too, for those lights?
For the, uh, no, the baseball fields beside Lead Street, um, are owned by Park and Rec.
Oh, okay. As long as it's not on our dime.
Not our dime.
They have those lights on a lot in the summer.
Yeah, I know.
So the, the recommendation would be to approve the Smart Start, uh, program, uh, for Bicentennial Elementary and Fairgrounds Middle School, uh, as presented, and we'd be using the shorter of the repayment terms.
I'd like to, would someone like to make a motion?
Mr. Mosher, he's on the committee, I feel like I should defer to him.
Mr. Mosher, would you like to make a motion?
Oh, I'd love to, yes. Uh, the motion is made.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mrs. Oden. Uh, on the motion, Mr. Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Garino votes yes. Uh, motion carries three to zero.
Did you need extra copies to go to Jackie for the...
Yeah, they, they, it's given.
Okay, that's one of them. Digging up the other one here. I'll dig it up before I leave.
Here's a clip for Jackie's. There's another one, Mr. Garino.
Okay. So we are moving on to, now we're moving on to our fiscal year twenty-eighteen February transfer report. Mr. Donovan?
Yes, and we only have one transfer that, uh, has brought forward this month, and that is for a nine-thousand-dollar transfer at New, the, uh, South High School. They're taking money from supplies and postage. Uh, the postage they saved because they streamlined the report cards, and they're, once again, buying more chairs. So I think you've seen at least two or three of these, um, and since we don't have much money in our, in our budget for furniture, what they've been getting out of their allocation. Now, the high schools do get a couple hundred thousand each in allocations, so, um, you know, if it was nine thousand at an elementary school, they certainly wouldn't have that kind of money, because they get thirty to thirty-five thousand a year. The high schools, bigger schools, more students, they get more money, but, uh, there are also newer, newer facilities for the most part, so that is the one entry that requires, uh, an approval.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Yes.
I have a question. Seeing where the chairs are broken, they're breaking.
Yes.
Are we replacing those chairs with the same quality chair?
No, it's a little, it's a little different chair.
A little sturdier?
Yeah, yeah. These chairs were all purchased when they redid the high schools.
Right, right, okay.
And they purchased a couple different kinds, sort of the chairs that, I think what, there were two kinds that were breaking. One was the chair in the cafeteria. Have you ever noticed those? They're just, they're plastic, and what some of the kids can do is they can reach down, and they can pull in the middle between their legs, and it just kind of pops the chair up.
Oh, okay.
And, but the ones, then there's also ones that, with the desks, the chair with the desk attached in the classroom, some of those are just breaking down all the time. I don't think there's as much.
They go to the landfill? Is that where they go?
I would assume that's where they go, unless they're recyclable, yeah, I mean, I, the plastic part's probably recyclable. Do you need, uh, yeah, ma'am, because it's over five thousand.
Do you need the motion? Okay.
Motion to approve, uh, the nine-thousand dollars for replacement chairs at Nashville High School.
Second.
On the motion, uh, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Garino votes yes. The motion carries through the transfer. Okay. Uh, and our last item, the February financial report. Okay, so this is February, uh, next month will obviously go through March. Then after that, I will start having a forecast for the year, so in April, you'll see a forecast, should be the fourth forecast to show to see where we're going to be at the end of the year. So that's when really the, I do a lot more detail, when hopefully the budget is done, and I can dig into the actuals for the year, and, but as, as I said, I do review this on a monthly basis. Wage's full-time, it's in line with where we've been on the months where we have two bi-weekly payrolls and four-weekly payrolls, so that's fine. Our overtime number is higher this month. It's the highest it's, it's been, uh, this year for a monthly amount, it's fifty-one thousand. Most of that was spent at the two high schools in Elm Street. Then, um, if you look down on the five-one-six-zero-zero longevity, you'll see that minus one ninety-two there. Back when the longevity was paid, it was doubled to a number of people, so that's the beginning of the payback. You'll see another negative number there next month, and then hopefully it'll be pretty much done. Uh, I'll have an update on that soon, but, uh, the last time I looked at it, most of the people had either paid it back or had it scheduled to be paid back, and there were just a few, a few left we had to check on. The stipends this month is thirty-one thousand, and most of that is the middle school coaches for the winter, so, other than that, um, the retirement separation pay is over budget for the year, and of that nine-eighty-nine number, the main two things that bring it up, teachers were about seven-hundred thousand, and administrators were about a hundred and ninety thousand. So that's most of where that, um, that amount comes from. Now, keep in mind, that's severance, but it's also if someone leaves and they have vacation, they also charge that there.
Right.
So it's, it's, as, as we know, it's going to be over, but hopefully we can make it up with some of the other labor accounts. All right, benefits are fine. Fifty-three, you'll see that account, five-three-one-fourteen, is fourteen thousand five hundred. That was the student activity fund audit that we shared last month with the board, so there'll be five hundred left in that account. Legal services is Attorney Clausen, that's three months. There's a little holdup on his bills, I guess, so I think we're pretty much up to date now with him. Rest of those accounts are okay, um, so I'm not, not too concerned there. Property services, we look at electricity and, and gas are two big, um, utility accounts. The number in electricity was pretty low for the month of January. Maybe there was a bill that's a little bit late, but I just took a look at it. Year-to-date, we're at one-point-one-five-seven, and last year, we were, at the same time, we're one-two-seven-nine, so we're still running slightly less than we were last year. And doing the same thing with heating gas, um, we're pretty close to where we were last year at this point in time, within about ten thousand or so. So if those numbers continue on the same, I mean, it'll be interesting with heating gas because of this cold March we've had, might cost us a little bit more. But if they continue on the same and path, then I think we should, we'll hopefully have a little bit of, uh, money left over in the, in the gas account. Electricity should get pretty close to the number, but, um, it shouldn't run over. That's at least a hope. Okay, page two, property services, as most of these items are, are, uh, items managed by Mr. Smith, and, um, he does a good job, and typically does it overrun his account, so I'm not too concerned. Telephone, I do need to get with Mr. Farrankoff, now that we've got the new phone system in, we're hoping we'd start to see a dec-...
we're hoping we'd start to see a decrease in this account, we really haven't seen it yet. So hopefully soon, some of the lines, some of the copper lines can be canceled with the new phone system. Now we're down, you'll notice this month, advertising, there was $7,600, which is about half of the budget for the year, but that was for the job fair, that was for the positions of the recent, that people are interviewing for now. We have, what, a couple of, a couple of principals, and we have...
Some more administrators.
Some administrators, especially the special ed department is going to have significant change.
The CTE director.
Exactly. There's another one. So that's what most of that is, you'll probably see that number up a little bit next month too. So that's probably, that, that account will overrun the budget it already has, it'll probably be a bit more. But it's not a huge amount of money. Postage and delivery is the print, actually, the printing, sorry, that's for the diplomas at the high schools, so it's a big chunk for one month, but we've got to get diplomas out. Tough graduation if we didn't have a diploma to give them. So, and then you go down and just take a look, the transportation services, we're doing, we're doing fine there. I'm going to have a more detailed view of that account as I do the forecast, but at this point, we look okay. And as I mentioned, every month, tuition out of district, there's $602,000 there, there's only one, a little over a million left in the account, and we still have four more months. So this is the account, this will run over this budget, I guarantee you that. And so that'll be what, what I'll be trying to manage in May and June. We do have the Special Revenue Fund to cover some of it, and then hopefully, like I said, if we can get some maybe from heating gas or one of the other line items, that will be the challenge for the spring. Supplies and materials, nothing too much there, pretty straightforward. And then if you look at indirect costs, that's the money we get from the grants, the revenue we get from the grants, we should see some entries starting to come in now. Glennis Chappett does a lot of, she does the billing and does the entries for these, so we should be seeing them probably in April is my guess. So this'll, hopefully this number will, will also have a little bit of extra by the end of the year. The computer accounts are fine. Furniture and fixtures has a negative this amount, but that was due to a transfer, where they charged it to the wrong account, and this was just correcting it, and that's a net number for the month. So other than that, like I said, we look pretty good. When I get to April and bring the forecast, I'll give you a more, more detailed view, because I'll have, I'll have more time to spend on mainly the big accounts, the transportation, all the labor accounts, and the out-of-district tuition. And based on those, we'll really get a sense of how the year's going to end up.
Any questions on that?
No.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mosher, do you have any comments or questions for Mr. Donovan?
No, I think that, you know, from what I know about the, the stuff and the numbers, they, I think just pretty much we expect them to be, I'm quite satisfied with it.
Okay, thank you. I think that's all we have tonight, unless anyone has any, anything?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Mrs. Oden.
Second.
All those in favor?
Voice vote.
We have to have a voice vote, okay. Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
How do you vote? Yes, Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Garino votes yes. This meeting is adjourned at 7:30 PM.
Seven, seven twenty-nine.